Okay, I would like to call the meeting to order. Um, and I want to start by saying that Marla is still out because of a medical issue. And Brendan Kinney is very sorry that he could not be here tonight. He had a family issue. So we are missing two members of the board this evening. The second thing I want to say is that Chris Leopold is sick and is not able to be here tonight for our training on student discipline hearings. So Beth and I are going to work to reschedule that for another time. I'm hesitant to change the timing of two items on the agenda, the discussion of the request. Pardon?
There's a bad sound issue.
Oh, okay. Tell me, is that better?
It has something to do with your microphone.
Maybe that. Is that in it?
Still, it's like...
I can't hear it.
Can you guys hear it?
It sounds better now.
Okay, is that all right? So, um, so I want to keep the Black Lives Matter item and the high school grading items at the times they were scheduled for because I think there will be people in the audience who have come to hear those discussions and perhaps to participate in them. So what I'd like to do is to move the third quarter financial, um, item up to 6:40. And if we have time, we'll also move the policy second readings up prior to the Black Lives Matter flag discussion. Okay? All right. So, um, are there, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, great. So let's move to the consent agenda. Is there anything that someone wants pulled from the consent agenda? All right, and I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the April 17 meeting, the minutes of the April 17 special community engagement meeting, the following professional appointments, Carrie Esperanza, library media specialist at Fleming, Lindsay Ackley, appointing a FTE school counselor at CTE, Henry Shepley, a middle school science teacher at EMS Essex Middle School, Alexis, do you know if it's Coke or Cut?
I think it's Coke.
Coke, coral teacher at Essex High School, and Matthew Courier, a one-year classroom position at Summit. And finally, approval of the warrants. Someone want to make that motion?
Sure.
Al's going to make the motion. Okay. Is there any, no, no discussion on consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Great. All right, so Brian, we're going to turn things over to you.
Okay. Um, I'm going to do a handout. I'm just putting this up just so that there's...
Oh gee.
So the board is going to have a handout. And so, but as a courtesy, I'm going to try to have some reference for the audience. I was anticipating that we might have less audience by the time we got to 8:45 than we have now.
Your work is riveting.
So that's the reason for the quick adjustment. What's circulating around is a third quarter financial report. As you know, as we've been trying to get the EWSD up and running, July 1 was both marked the first day of business and also the first day with employees, the first day on a new financial system, first day on a new HR system, first day with new leadership. There's a bit of a newness to it, a new car smell. But we have been working diligently to try to get things up and running. And what I have for you this evening is to take a look at the General Fund and the Center for Technology. And I've organized this in the same way that we did the budget work, so that our revenues are broken down into the four primary categories, our expenses are broken down into the three major categories, and then we go through the process of taking a look at voter-approved adjustments and so forth. So I'm going to run some geography of what we're looking at and then do some highlights on some things that I see as strengths, weaknesses, some threats that we have, and some opportunities that we have as we're looking at third quarter. Everybody set? And the report up on here is ridiculously small, but I will, I will try to, try to organize it as we go along. So on the left-hand column, we, we run all our different categories. On the first page, we work with the revenues. On the second page, we work with the expenses. And then each one of the two entities has the same type of column layout. We have the voter-approved budget, which for FY '18, for the Westfords, Essex Westford School District, was the $75,287. We have adjustments to budget, and those would occur either through budget managers transferring resources and capacity from one line to another, or the sizable differences oftentimes is unrecognized or previously not recorded or anticipated revenues, which happen with federal grants or state grants. So those monies come in and have a fairly large, and we can talk about some of those in detail. It gives us an adjusted budget, and then from the adjusted budget, we take a look at what the expenses or revenues are for the first nine months of operation. And then we come in and look at any encumbrances. So we work on an encumbrance accounting system. So if we have a payable that we know about that's going to occur within either 12 months within the fiscal year or by the end of the fiscal year, we actually kind of put a tag on that money to make sure that we only spend it once. So that's the encumbrance aspect of that. And then that year-to-date is expenses plus encumbrances, which gives us a remaining budget capacity and then a percent capacity. Now, some of this is set up to mirror what the policy is looking for, where we're looking for original appropriation, authorized transfers on the expenses. We want to see expenses to date, outstanding encumbrances, unencumbered balances. So much of this report is based off the financial reporting statements policy that I think is coming to second reading tonight. And then the same exact presentation is for the Tech Center, which is a separately voted article. And in FY '18, that article was for $8.2 million. Any questions on the layout? Okay. So what we need to look at when we get to a nine-month thing, and part of this is still a learning curve for me to understand kind of the intimacies of what is the cash flows that happen in the course of a year. And honestly, I think even if we take a look at our history, we would still have to recognize that we're a brand-new organization and we may be charting some new territory. We know that our, our largest revenue comes in two portions. It's the state support that comes in through the state aid fund, and that comes in in both the fall and then again in April. So this is only recording 50% of that revenue, or, or half, approximately half of that revenue. It comes in about 65%, 65, 75, 35%. The shorting, or the rescission, the clawback, whatever terminology you'd like to use that we're anticipating that was part of the budget deal at the end of last year's legislature occurs in the second payment of the aid fund to the district. So that's where the Essex Westford School District will be shorted $535,000, and the Center for Technology will be shorted approximately $182,000. Then again, in FY '19, there'll be another rescission, but a smaller one, approximately 30% of the overall value. The total rescission for both entities is right around $1 million between the Center for Technology and for the Essex Westford School District. So when we look at this, we're trending so that we have about 60% of our revenue in for the school district, and we have approximately 27% or 26% of our revenue in for the Tech Center. The Tech Center goes slower because so much of its revenue is dependent upon the state aid that comes in. So it's much more dependent upon those timings of fall and April, where the, the Westford School District has a good deal of special ed funding, federal funding, state funding, and also some local sources. So it's not unusual that we would see a different speed of revenue recognition between the two different entities.
So is, is there anything on the revenue side that is unexpected or alarming?
So those really, taking those as two different questions, because there, I'm not seeing, there's no concern, as I work with the finance folks at 51 Park, and we review in a general state, we're strong and continue to be operating as expected. There's a few areas that we have some weakness that are not really material in comparison to larger areas. As you know, as we built the budget, the largest area that we have is in personnel, and that it takes up the lion's share of our budget. We're tracking and trending that well, and so...
I was just talking about the revenue side for help, because when...
Yeah, on a general sense, that on the revenue side, we're not seeing concerns of large revenue, again, because the large revenues are pretty well set, and we know about those. We're seeing some of the smaller revenues, like getting and norming out a new routine to making sure that we're recognizing gate receipts that are coming in and so forth. There's just some systems that are continuing to need to be built as we get larger systems in place, but we're happy with that. We are recognizing, as we built the budget, we started to see places where we recognized that Essex Westford School District didn't have a revenue line for the shared services that it's providing to the Technical Center. The Technical Center had a budget for costs, but the school district didn't have a revenue line for those. So we'll see a significant unexpected revenue in the tune of over $1 million. And we'll see some state construction aid funding that comes in from our reserve. That wasn't recognized in the FY '18 budget either.
During budget season.
Right. So in '19, we reconciled all of that, but it will mean that we'll have some, a good deal of additional revenues that we didn't initially anticipate.
Maybe that will help us have a fund balance for next year that's not too much different from, or the year after.
Right.
Not too much different from what we've traditionally had.
So the operating results of FY '18, whatever the positive results are, are required to go back and reduce taxes in FY '20. So on the revenue side, I think we're doing well. There's really, even though there's a lot of lines, there's very few moving parts when it comes into materiality. The largest ones are really our special ed reimbursement, our excess costs, some of our, in the Tech Center, it's really their tuition and their state, and their state support. So if we watch those and maintain those, then those are the large ones.
Item number, line 12, 15, 10. So negative 200, 70, 30% remaining.
Okay, and I'm assuming a negative, since the numbers all seem to be negative, does this mean that we had a positive gain in, in revenue?
And you said line 27, was that?
It's line 12.
Interest.
Local, well, it says local, 15, 10.
Yeah, that's the result, what we're carrying right now. So we had anticipated approximately $10,000 of interest for our sweep account. We, through the tan that we used, we brought the tan in, and we've been able to be generating the, the receipts that we need right now. So we've been carrying a higher balance than we had first anticipated. So what we'll do to correct that going into next year, because some of that is better interest, but some of it is carrying costs. So what we'll do is we'll reduce the amount of money that we take from the tan initially so that we're just tighter, because now it's pretty much a wash. As we get additional interest, it's because we have a carrying cost that's, that's kind of netting out.
And does everybody know what tan means?
Tax anticipation.
Tax anticipation.
So when we say that we're gonna, that we're gonna need approximately $60 million to operate our budget, and we have the state of Vermont that's going to send us $60 million over the course of a year in two increments, we can bid that out to local banks and ask, would you front us 60 million, and we'll pay you back when the state pays us? So that's how a tan works. And what we do is work on cash flow so we understand where our lowest months are. We actually don't take, do a tan for the entire amount. We do a tan more for like, I think our tan, our maximum is 7.2 million, because we saw that as our trough at the time where we would have our most expenses and our least amount of revenues coming in.
Okay.
It would be when we get...
Bunched into something else.
Yeah, when we get down into, the bunch into the administrative and other support.
So are we ready to move to expenses?
Expenses has the same layout, and it's broken down into these three categories that we did the budget in: instructional services, instructional support services, and administrative and other support services. And this is the way that the state breaks it down and uses it in its statistical reports and some of its comparison reports for cost effectiveness and cost comparisons for districts. So the first part is all our direct instruction, special ed, athletics, and because this is a combined report, it also includes all the vocational ed, and then goes across. In all our areas, again, without exception, all our major functions underneath these categories are all positive, continue to be positive, are trending either as expected or better than expected right now. And we have some of the larger areas that we anticipated, as for instance, under line 110, we have student transportation residence. With the change of plans at the end of last summer and not to execute bus transportation in Essex Junction, we had anticipated we'd have a considerable savings. That savings is materializing there. So we're anticipating about a $600,000 savings in that line alone. And you can see, this is where a good deal of the money that came in, you can see that under the adjustments, the second column for adjustments to budget, those really large numbers, starting at the top with 140,000 and 226, further down in the next category, 261, you can see those are all directly related to Title I and some of the special ed grants. So those are grants that, when we budget, we have some firm numbers, but we don't always have a guaranteed number. And this last year, going into FY '18, the Title I, Title III, Title IV, were all very late as far as notices.
And Title II-A, the professional development money.
Yeah. The good news is that we ended up with considerably more than we had first budgeted. Some districts didn't end up in that favorable position. And then what we do is we augment that, and that's part of the ability that we have through the annual meeting to accept grants and to be able to expend them. It gives you also a volume of those adjustments, so that as we look at those authorized transfers and adjustments, it's in total about $650,000 that came in. Say about 90% or 80% of that is through title special, special funding, special revenue funding. As we get to this time of year, and, and we'll, we'll improve these reports considerably, I will improve these reports considerably for your purposes and for mine, but we're also at a time of year where we need to start to and have begun really combing through the encumbrances. We're at about $2.5 million in encumbrances. It's not uncommon that there might be an encumbrance on the books, but we have changed plans, or we've kind of ebbed or flowed from that. And what we need to do is make sure you go in and close those purchase orders, free that money back up. So that's a process. As we start to get to the end of the year, we'll start to project year-end balances and making sure that encumbrances are closed and cleaned up, or made if we know that there is a definite purchase that's going to be happening. I put down at the bottom of the page, there was some interest in having cash balances. And as you can see, for our operation, at the end, at the very beginning of January 2018, we had cash on hand of about $17 million, and at the end of March 31st, we're at about $3 million. And that's our burn rate as we go through. Our burn rate's about, I mean, our personnel costs of just payrolls is about $2.4 million a month. So, and then on top of that, we've got the benefits. I, I put down, I thought it was interesting, our largest check to date since July 1 was $1,048,000. That's our Blue Cross Blue Shield bill.
Makes sense.
Our smallest check was a dollar, which drives me crazy that we wrote a check for a dollar.
Is it purchasing property?
It may have been. It may have been one of those things where we had to have a check for it. Total purchase orders processed, about 8,000. Total checks cut about 7,500. What's also interesting, you know, we have a certain number of employees, but our employees don't always equate to who is our W-2 eligibles, because all substitutes are W-2 eligibles and other people that come into the district. So our active W-2 eligible employees in the system right now is at just around 1,600 employees. So our FTE that we count, or our bodies that we count are around 950, 955. Our FTE that the state counts for our purposes of ratios is about 830. And then we have W-2s of around 1,600. So all of that hopefully provides some context that just, you know, the workings.
So are there any areas in, on the expense side that you're concerned about?
Um, there's parts, I, I think the concern is that, you know, there's a lot of activity and swirl happening obviously around our health benefits and our HRAs and other things of that nature. And getting that so that it's all settled, again, it's, it's a relatively manageable amount of money in comparison to the 85 million that we have as a responsibility to be stewards of. But it's just a matter of when, when are we going to be able to get there on June 30th and be able to have a solid number and really be able to then compare it going into FY '19? I think '18 has been great. It was a heroic effort to pull together a unified budget out of all the districts on top of the fact of losing the CFO and having the change. I think we learned in the FY '19 budgeting process that there's a, there was a lot of room that we could take a next step, and I think we did a lot of those. But I think it makes some of this comparison where you would normally be looking at budget to actual to really give you those indicators. I think we have to look a little differently, almost like next year's budget, this year's actual, is, gives us a sense. But as I've combed through this and worked on it over the last month with the finance folks, there wasn't something that came up to us as an oh, no. There was more of the situations of like, well, there's that revenue that has to be recognized, there's that, there's that expense that's not going to be realized and so forth.
Questions from board members? So, Brian, I haven't dealt with the Center for Technology budget before, and it strikes me as a bit that there are a couple categories where half of the budget or less than half of the budget is spent. Is that normal? I mean, one area is guidance, one area is, I think, adult services. So I'm just curious.
Yeah.
It just doesn't seem, it's not the flow that I'm used to.
I think the guidance is, it actually is a bit more of an issue with personnel and some of the budgeting that happened there. The other larger one, the probably the largest contributor, is that the shared services.
That's the one.
We, we don't pull the shared services until the aid payment comes through.
Ah, okay.
Just to have that money.
Yeah, okay.
That's a...
So there are expenses there, you're just not recording them yet.
In fact, I know that they're on the April financial statement, because we were able to do them.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. And as you have a chance to look at this and think about it some more, if you have any thoughts, or if there's areas that you want Brian to do some training in in the future, get in touch with me and we'll figure that out. But it's great to see if I need to stay. So we still have a little bit of time. I would suggest we move to second reading of the two policies. Help me out, F-21 and E-10. So we did discuss these last time. Beth, is it, or Diane, is there anything?
Well, the corrections that were desired appear to have been made, so that should read as, as expected, or at least it read as I expected.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments? Okay, so this does take a motion, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve Policy F-21, Financial Reports and Statements, and Policy E-10, Voluntary School Reassignment at second reading.
K-3.
Oh, K-3 at second reading. Al made the motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thanks. So we still have almost 15 minutes. So let's move to task team updates. Liz, you want to talk about communications?
Sure. We have, the Nellie May update is always part of this, and actually, we have somebody, some students in the room who took part today in the Power Two Summit. I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I heard from the facilitator and from the group who sent a group of kids down and through Voices for Education that you guys were rock stars. I didn't know if you want to say anything about your experience there?
I, I had a personally great experience. I met some really wonderful people and got in contact with one of them, so I think it was an awesome thing that you guys let us do, and I'd love to go again next year.
It was empowering to, to hear other people supporting us and other people who are dealing with the same things.
It's good to talk to people that like legitimately want to be there and want to, that aren't just like, I really don't care. Yeah.
We also got to lead a group discussion. We got to lead a group discussion. We thought there was someone coming in, but they didn't, so we just started talking about all our stuff. So we just started talking about all of our stuff and it was pretty awesome.
Comes five foot.
Yeah, so one thing.
Can you explain what it is?
So the Power 2 Summit was a, Beth, you might be able to describe it a little bit better, but it was a coming together of, it was really very student focused and trying to get student voice and trying to organize a series of workshops to really focus on what's working well and how to really raise up the voices of students in general. We Voices for Education, as some of you know, have done some engagement over the past year. Some of what we did has been turned into a standalone activity and was facilitated through the, through the work of this district and is being used to, to sort of show how, how this work can be impactful in districts and in schools around, around the state. So thank you for being there. We, we really do appreciate that. And so that's the, the Nellie May. We have the start and stop time update. Stuff is later probably, it was on there. And pretty much board communications, anything else for you?
No, I don't think so. I have some meetings coming up this week with Continuity trying to reach out to the PTOs, but that won't be until probably next meeting. I'll have a good update for how I intend, how I intend to sort of open up the avenues of communication, as it were.
Great. Questions for Liz or Patrick?
Question or maybe just a comment on the PTO connection to the extent you were able to do that and they're willing to be sort of a separate group through which we might be able to share information that they would then share in their buildings?
That would be great. I know that Martha and I in the very beginning had met with them. I'm not sure how much continued collaboration they're doing, but even if as a group, they'd be interested in being an avenue for information through Voices for Education and/or from the board to their newsletters. They have quite the following, I think, in most of our buildings and can be really helpful.
My gut feeling is that the PTOs have kind of decided that they want to keep doing their own thing, as they have been. And I think that the best idea that we've come up with, or at least that, you know, from who I've talked to so far, is that there would be the idea that we would have a shared document where after each board meeting, I would type up, you know, a, a few paragraphs, you know, points of emphasis or communication that the PTOs could then share at their meetings. And then by the same extension, I told them that, you know, we usually have communications task team updates. So if there was anything critical in the school or something that they, you know, wanted the board to know, that I could then take their suggestions as well and then read them off to the group as they came. But as far as how that practice would be formalized, we just aren't quite there yet.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Student representation, do you want to take that? You want me to?
You're good.
Okay. So Liz and I met with Rob Reardon last month. Sometime in April. And mapped out a process for choosing a junior to join the board in May and a sophomore to join the board, a sophomore who will be a junior to join the board in August. So the applications for the juniors are out. And there will be an interview team made up of the principal, Rob, myself, Nick Hannah, who is the senior student rep on the board, and a staff member. So who, depending on the number of applications, we may interview everyone or if there are a lot of applications, we'll narrow the field and interview the people that we consider the finalists. So her hope is, May is a very busy month for students. But her hope is to have someone named to the board so that they can attend the May 15th meeting. So they could have two or three meetings with Nick before Nick's term finishes. Then we'll start the process for the sophomores right after that. And we'll be doing those interviews toward the end of May. And the sophomore would join the board in August when they're about to be a junior. So I, and we, I should have, I should send it to you. We put together an information sheet and then application, can you do that? Thanks. It's, it wasn't, it's not, the application isn't complicated, but would give us the kind of information that we were interested in. And mainly it's about talking about why he'd be interested in being a student member on the board. So questions about that? Okay. So we're looking forward to adding the second voice soon and then saying this ad goodbye to Nick and adding a new voice come August. Anything else under? So I realize that I didn't put this on the agenda. Do I need to, the appointment of board members to task teams?
You probably should put it on the next one.
Okay, so we'll do that for next month. Diane, I haven't heard from you.
It's been a busy day.
Okay. So let's, we have five more minutes. So let's do statewide update. Kim testified in Mount Hillier today, so she might want to speak about that. And then the governor came out with a new plan today. I can't say that we've had a chance to digest it yet. But Dylan has frankly been fabulous about getting in touch with Kim and I and Beth and Brian as soon as things are happening on the education front. It's Dylan Giambattista, who's a state rep from Essex Junction who serves on the House Education Committee. So he has been just wonderful about keeping us informed on all the fronts that education legislation is being considered.
So late yesterday, I was invited to testify today on statewide healthcare for educators. And the Senate Ed Committee was taking up that topic. And a couple of other fellow VSBA board members were also asked to come who've had some experience in negotiations. So that Senate Ed Committee has been working with both the NEA and the VSBA to form a proposal that would look at perhaps a commission that would oversee healthcare negotiations that would include employee representatives from the NEA and school board representatives as well. So it was a little bit short notice, but I was glad I was able to attend. I was able to share the very positive experience we've had in negotiating in our district. But bringing together so, such disparate contracts in a collaborative way, getting to agreement on so many issues, but getting to the end and being in a place where healthcare really didn't feel as though we were, it was just being controlled as we sat at that table. And I think that was important to share because I think lots of districts around the state had that sense that we were at the end of a process and, and it was bigger than what was happening at our own table. So I was able to share that experience and raise some questions and suggestions from the proposal. They had just released a new proposal. They incorporated previous testimony from others. So in a very quick way, we were able to take a look at it and see where it might be incorporated into the testimony. I'll share the testimony with you guys and it'll be up with the Senate Ed Committee as well. They asked some good questions. I will say the very first thing that Senator Bruce did was thank us for our quick action on Act 46 as a school district and that he had attended some of, or an early meeting, I think, in Westford and heard the concerns and was pleased to see that despite that, as the study committee went along and the project was brought to fruition, we were able to unify, unify in a way that showed cohesion among our communities and really get to work on that. And he felt appreciative that they could see the law in action in such short order. So it was a nice way to begin our conversation.
Thanks, Kim. I think you will probably be, healthcare is a piece of the governor's proposal that came out today. I think there will probably be quite a bit of press about it over the next few days. It does incorporate staff-student ratios, but not as a mandate and not with penalties. Although it, it predicts saving a lot of money over time. The hope is to work with school districts and use attrition to change the ratios. It incorporates the special ed work. I think one of the most controversial features is going to be that it uses a lot of one-time money that is being taken out of reserves and other places to backfill the $58 million hole this year so that tax rates or the yields don't have to increase. I think people are, I think there's going to be a lot of discussion about whether the legislature wants to use one-time money again with no guarantee. Although on paper, the governor does show that it can be paid back, but no guarantee that it can be paid back in the coming year. So I, frankly, it's a very complex proposal. And it's hard to imagine that in the week and a half that's left in session that they're going to be able to work through it, but time will tell. I, I guess the most important thing is that, and maybe some of you saw something I didn't see, but I didn't see anything in the proposal that was alarming for our district. So I think that's probably the most important thing to convey.
I think just add on healthcare. My hope is that they have moved thoughtfully, I think, through their iterations right now in Senate Ed anyway, on statewide healthcare after the Vermont NEA, you know, their delegates voted to support the notion of a statewide negotiated healthcare. The very last sort of warning that Senator Bruce offered was that, you know, they're going to continue moving as though this is going to move. And they recognize that it may still not. That if it were to be tied up in the miscellaneous ed bill, which much of what has come out in that proposal would be, that they didn't have a good read on what either a veto response might be or how weighed down that bill might become with other things to know, even with the intentional effort and good back and forth on their body of work, where that, what would happen with that in committee and ultimately where that would end up. So I am hopeful that in trying to do more, we don't get less.
That's interesting because that bill is in the House. But.
His version is, I think, I think in general, he was suggesting that, that where we, where they are in healthcare could be sidetracked by.
The House is going to have a position and negotiate. Okay.
The House was taking up, had represented from Joint Fiscal looking at healthcare as well. As I was leading, they're working parallel, I think.
Yeah. I bet that is. Okay, so any final questions on the statewide update? Okay, then we're going to move on to the request we had from the Westford students at the last meeting to fly a Black Lives Matter flag. We have two items on the agenda tonight that I think folks in the audience may want to comment on. So I want to explain how this works. This is a meeting of the school board taking place in public. It is not a forum. It is not an engagement opportunity. But we do give members of the public an opportunity to comment. We don't do that until the board has had a chance to discuss the item first. So we will start with our discussion. And when that discussion has finished, I will open it up to the audience. And I will ask that if you want to comment, that you identify yourself, that you be recognized by the chair before you start speaking, that you are respectful, please. I've experienced times when people just talk out and interrupt and I would appreciate it if that does not happen. And generally, we let each person speak once. Okay? All right. So just to frame this, and I don't know if you want to frame it, Beth, or if you want me to in terms of guidelines?
I, well, I can do it.
You're the one who spoke with Chris this week.
So the board would like to set some guidelines. And the guidelines are for discussion, but I'll list, there's three guidelines for something like this that comes forth to the board. So one of them is to present a timeline so that if it is, for example, a Black Lives Matter flag, then there's a timeline that's given with that. Chris Leopold did, our lawyer, did suggest for this situation, the one that's at hand for discussion tonight is a one to two week window of raising that flag. And then another guideline would be to have, if students have a petition, because it would show more interest and how much interest there is. Now, there's not a set percentage of the enrollment of the school, but it would give you an idea that there is more than just the people that come to present to the board. And this is for anything moving forward. And then the third one is that it has to, whatever is presented has to fall under the schools' and students' values. So for example, the Black Lives Matter does fall under our diversity values and equity. And so those are the three guidelines that Chris is suggesting and that you have talked about at different times in the board meeting to just kind of pull those together.
And I think the last piece is that it come from student voice.
Yes.
So we wouldn't entertain a proposal from adults to fly something on the flag.
Correct. And that was probably set this year because I, I had said it had to come from students.
Right. Exactly. And for those who weren't at the previous meeting, it has been determined that the flagpole is under control of the board. So it is the board that gets to decide what flies on the flagpole. And of course, we've spent quite a bit of time looking at other districts that have had this discussion prior to us. So let's talk about the timelines. What are folks thinking about what has been proposed so far? Are there other guidelines that you think we should be considering? Kim?
I guess I have a number of thoughts, but my first thing would be to respond to the question, which is how would diversity of religious groups fall under the? the third guideline? Because for instance, there are some groups that are persecuted as a result of their religious origin or heritage, but I know that in the schools, we try not to officially display any religious symbols. So if there were a petition about, for instance, an oppressed group like, that's identified by their religion, like Baha'i somewhere in the Middle East, is that if we're flying a flag of a group that is identified by their religion, is that permitted or not?
Well, there is, there are laws about religion in schools. You can't miss the religion in schools, so that is different. It does, there's laws around that.
But I mean, there are group, some people who are identified by their religion in order to be persecuted in ways that are quite analogous to how African Americans are persecuted.
But I think if they were being identified by their religion, it would fall under separation of church and state. When we actually make this decision about the request from the Westford students, we will have Chris, her, and you can ask that question for certain. But I've given that quite a bit of thought and I do think you would be challenged if the flag is a religious symbol. Yes, Patrick?
What percentage are we looking at for the number of students that we'd want to have coming forward or bringing a proposal? Are we thinking 10, 25?
50? I mean, what's administration's thoughts?
I don't, I've thought a lot about that and I think that the petition has to show that there's more than just a few. I, I wouldn't want to set a percentage to it unless you all want to. And then I would keep that. I think that the point of having a petition is to saying that there are more at the school. That would like this also. I don't think that you can say a majority at the school. I think that that wouldn't be fair. But just to say that there are more students that, you know, are agreeing to whatever their, a proposal is.
Right. I mean, I could...
Certainly set it.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could see the value in setting a number because it would, you know, allow us in the future, right, and give them a goalless, you know, sort of shoot for, as it were, although I do understand that, you know, particular shoes may not get a number beyond that, but they still may, they may still be worthwhile to be recognized.
Yes, and Beth and I have talked about that in the case of Westford since it's a K-8 school. We probably just ask for a percentage of the five through eight population at the school because that, we think those are the students who have the capacity to understand this issue well enough to make a decision. So what does the board think about a specific number? Keel?
My concern is that any percentage or number that is small enough to be attained by groups that are truly not heard is also small enough to be attained by people who are insincere or have views that maybe we don't have any interest in entertaining. Like, I mean, I'm sure you've all heard of Bodie McBoatface where people manipulated a internet naming thing. It's, if we have a small enough number that it's like reasonable to attain, people could also attain it for other reasons. So I think whatever we suggest about petitions, we need to own the final decision, saying that we on the board support this because there isn't a number that I think accurately represents saying that the students or our community support us.
So you're basically agreeing with Beth and I think we aren't saying, I think we need to be clear that we're not saying, if you get this many signatures on a petition, we will fly the flag. We are saying, in order for us to consider your request to fly the flag, these are the guidelines that we would like you to meet. And I, so I think that's an important distinction to make. Does anyone have any other, yeah?
By the same token, if there's a finite opposition to the action, how will that be handled if it comes from the students as well? You could have an equal and opposite Newton's Law.
That's not something I had spent a lot of time thinking about. No, that's fine. Again, since we're not making a decision tonight, I think that's a good question to ask our lawyer, how we should consider that if that should happen.
I'm sorry, I missed, I apologize. I think I missed.
So Andre is saying, suppose we had a proposal that came forward that met our guidelines, that included a petition that had signatures of 25% of the student body. What if another petition with 25% of the student body came forward saying they did not want it to happen? How, right, what would we do? So, yeah, I'd like some legal advice about that, I think. Other comments or questions from board members?
Just a question. If there was an action or the raising of a flag that spoke against laws, but it actually encouraged diversity, how would that be handled? And I guess I'll reference, right now, there's a lot of discussion on immigration policies and the presence, et cetera. DACA defense speaks to the childhood arrivals that came in with their parents, but they're not lawfully present, but they're here. So would we have a policy that prevented or spoke against having some type of flag showing support to repeal a present laws or anything of that nature?
I could give additional examples. If students propose a petition to show their support for lowering the drinking age to 18 or propose something...
And had a flag to go.
Right. Or if they had a flag for changing the grading system that our administration had promulgated.
I think we run across the idea that, again, I think what we're discussing is not the ability to get the petitions and then the flag goes up, but it's rather just to get the names to bring it before the board and then we would, as a group, make, you know, the decision of drinking age down to 18 is clearly not something that, you know, we think should be run up the flagpole for, display around the state, you know, but I think other options, like while that specific example, Andre, about, you know, DACA, for example, you know, while the laws themselves, you know, are on the books as they are, speaking out, you know, your opinion for whether you agree with the law or not, I mean, there's no law against that.
No, no, I agree.
So, I mean, I just think that there's a, you know, there's sort of two steps here, the board part and then the opinion part.
And then, again, the importance of consulting legal counsel to make sure that we wouldn't be making a decision that would potentially put us in a legal bind. Diane?
So like, my question is, we are, you know, we've been discussing students at this point in time. What happens if we got a petition from the general public as to a topic or for that matter, the faculty and staff as, on another general topic? Well, what would be our procedure for that? Because it's a different, slightly different population, but we're as equally committed to hearing them too.
So I, that's why our guideline says that this won't be about student voice. So I think our guidelines are going to say this is only, only going to be considered when it comes from students. Okay? Nick?
Something that has been concerning me, cognitive abstraction doesn't usually come to children until ages 11 through 16, if I'm correct. And I'm just wondering how this will, how, I don't know, the results or the, or the, what the outcomes of tying, you know, a, what some could consider a politically, a politically affiliated movement with students who are of a younger stage of development.
Did you understand the question?
So you're thinking about, like at Westford, it's a K-8.
Yes, K-3.
So he's saying from 11 to 18, that's when they can start to understand something like this, right?
Higher orders of thinking.
Yeah. And that's very true. And that's when you and I had discussed to the petition or to get from the five through eight, but I agree, like how is that explained to younger students?
And I think it will be important if we should decide to say yes, that some thought be given to, and the students have already taught to teachers to some in Westford. I don't know that they went to the lower grades, but it will be important for there to be some discussion at an age-appropriate level of what it's about. That's important. Anything else that the board wants to talk about at this point? Keel?
Sorry that I'm talking so much. I thought about it a lot. I guess I feel pretty confident that the outlined guidelines would ensure that we're looking at proposals that represent something that a lot of people care about and that we are taking responsibility for the decision in the end. But I'm still concerned whether flying anything up the flagpole is the best way to share a message that we support in the community. I feel like it's the sort of thing that will share a message of solidarity with people throughout the country who believe the same way, but it is unlikely to have as much of an effect in changing minds within our own community as something like having community engagements. And I think we've built a lot of capacity for doing things where people really are listening to one another in the community. And I personally would feel like the best first step for any issue that the board thinks is this important would be to get people talking to each other in a room in the community. Because that's so much more likely, like when I first heard of Black Lives Matter, I was like, okay, great, but these other people are saying all lives matter, what's the deal? And then I listened and I read and I understood, you know, there's a reason why we are already recognizing all these other lives mattering and African Americans are being accidentally shot all the time. So I was like, this is something that needs to be spoken up about. But I don't think just raising a flag is how you do that. You do it by sharing people's stories. So I wouldn't want to see us doing this without at least also doing conversations.
Yeah, I agree. That's something that Liz and Beth and I have talked about, especially given some of the differing opinions that we've seen on Facebook and on Friend Porch Forum and emails that we've seen, received from within the community, that, you know, this is not a community engagement opportunity, but I think a community engagement would be really important to do and, yeah.
Yeah, and as Martha said, Voices for Education has been talking about that and I just wanted to remind ourselves, we've talked about this before, but in Montpelier, it was a year of process. I think it was even more than a year of conversations with the community and with the students and with the, and it was a process that got them to that, that point. So I just wanted to echo what you said, that I think that the relationship building, the conversation is critical in addition to the raising of the flag.
Kim, Patrick, can then want to open it up to the...
I agree with all of that and the notion that it isn't just a flag, but rather it's incorporated into what we are believing in our schools and talking about in our schools with our students and with our community. And that I'm still a little bit stuck on how we apply this in a pre-K through 12 district, not even just on this matter, but as we're thinking about our standards for what we would approve or do on any request. And so I'm not, I don't have the answer to that, but I think it's something we'll want to consider because we're making, you know, we're being so intentional about finding ways to be cohesive as a pre-K 12 district that I think I would feel best knowing we've discussed that enough to feel comfortable with how we want to proceed generally in these requests.
Patrick?
I think to the point of the flag itself versus community engagement, my impression is that the raising of the flag is to basically force conversation, which I think that it has done, just judging from the size of the audience versus what we usually have at board meetings. Community engagement works very well when the people who are in the community want to be part of that engagement. But I think the idea behind putting a flag up is that you're going to be hearing from people that you normally would not. It's a forced confrontation, much like, you know, a peaceful protest that might block down a street would be. It's no longer something that you can ignore if the school puts up, you know, a flyer or sends one home with parents saying, we want to have a racial justice conversation next Tuesday. Some of the people who may disagree the most with it just simply aren't going to show up. The flag being raised itself puts a symbol out there that forces the conversation. I think that might be the difference between why the flag itself might be being raised versus us getting a proposal that says, hey, we would like to take every Tuesday of the month to have a racial justice group discussion. Just my viewpoint on it.
So we'll have time to ponder all this and thoughts we hear from the audience before we make a final decision. Is there any?
I just have only one comment, which is that last time when the students were here to present, there were no other middle schools and as, I think Brattleboro now has just raised it, so they would not be the first middle school in the state to have done this. So there's the sensitivity to that age group and whether they have something to contribute. I personally think, of course, they do, but, but, yeah, so it's not, no longer the case that this would be the first one in the state.
Andre, did you have a last comment?
Well, just one comment and given that we're a larger district now with 10 schools or nine schools, should the requests actually be also encompassing all the schools rather than just one school out of the district? That's, it's a...
I, I'm actually very comfortable with it being one school. I think that's certainly what happened in Burlington, certainly what happened in Montpelier.
And Brattleboro.
And Brattleboro was two schools.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. All the Westford students are here, so I'm going to give them the first opportunity if they have anything they'd like. So I'm gonna give them the first opportunity if they have anything they'd like to say after having heard this conversation. And then I'll open it up to others in the audience. So, any of the three of you, yes? So are you gonna, can you talk a little louder? Let's give her a microphone.
I'm Rosie from Westford. And I was wondering about the petition that you were saying. You were saying around twenty-five percent or five through eight, are there specific, like, goals that we have to reach for it?
So we haven't made a final decision as a board about that particular guideline. What I heard was, and I'll ask board members to disagree if they disagree, what I heard was, we think the petition in Westford should just be five through eight. And I believe we came down on the side of, we wouldn't ask for a specific number, but rather that you bring a petition that shows some level of support. Does that make sense? Keely?
Based on what Nick said and the grade divisions of our other schools, would it make more sense to say six through eight?
Well, that's a good point, yeah. Although in Westford, it's really five through eight that is considered the middle school. So I think probably we should be school-specific in terms of how things are done.
Yeah.
Does that help, Rosie?
Um, yeah, I was also wondering, two other things about the petition. Will it just be Westford or will we have to talk to other schools in the district?
Just Westford.
Okay. And when should this be due?
That's a good question. Good for you. I would say when you have it, let us know. So, you know, if it's not on us to do it fairly quickly, that would be good. Our next board meeting is May fifteenth. Does that helpful?
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, um, sorry, I'm talking. But, um, did, does anyone know if Brattleboro had to do, like, petitions or anything? Or did they have enough people supporting?
No, Burlington did a petition. I, if Montpelier did a petition, I honestly don't know about Brattleboro.
Brattleboro did it in part of their Celebration of Diversity Week. And so they did it as a campaign. They, they worked towards getting it raised as that. And, and part of our guidelines, it sounds like, are, would be around a one or two week period. So maybe timing it with some kind of awareness campaign is, is what was behind that guideline.
All right, I have a question. If we did make a petition and meet the three requirements you guys said, would it be like, we'll definitely raise it or we'll consider it? Okay.
You, you will have an opportunity later if you, before we wrap up, if you, if there's something else.
I think I heard someone say that, um, flying the flag makes you look at the problem instead of avoiding it. And you can see the problem but still avoid it, but if it's there, it's less hard to. Does that make sense?
It's hard for you to.
And we want to have those conversations, but I, maybe this is just me, but I know Westford is very small. And so I think I heard someone say that just having Westford have these conversations would make a big, big difference, but I feel like it would start something. So even if we had, like, I guess, district meetings kind of like this, but about racial injustice and about these problems, would that, like, could something happen like that?
Yes, I think there can be school-specific things and I think there can be district-wide activities as well. Okay? All right, I'm gonna open it up to, oh, Virginia, one last thing. And I'm gonna open it up to others in the audience. Oh, sorry.
Okay, I remember. How long would you let us fly it for?
So Beth talked earlier about what the, the recommendation from our lawyer was.
And it was a one to two week. That's his recommendation. So then the board would take that into consideration.
So one of the things you may wanna think about is, is there a specific time period that would make sense? And maybe it's not till next fall and you wanna plan a, a series of events around it. Or maybe it is this spring, but how can you frame it to make it special? Assuming we say yes. Yes, Rosie?
Would we have to use the one to two week time period or can we expand that?
Our, our legal advice is to have a specific period of time. If you wanna come back with a request for something different than one to two weeks, I think you could. But the legal advice is to have it timed limited. So I know last time you said you'd like to fly it forever. I know, I think Burlington is talking about flying it every year during Black History Month. So I think you should think about something along those lines. Not that it would be on the flagpole forever, but some, a request for something that would have some meaning. Patrick?
I just have a quick question, just for my own clarification. Are we deciding on the matter or the proposal they brought to, brought to us last week tonight? Or are we making them go back to follow the rules of our petition tonight? I guess I'm just not totally.
No, they, they still have some work to do.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if there was something I missed.
I guess, one question, maybe just for our process and Patrick's question. We've spoken tonight about possibilities for guidelines that we've received from our attorney and time-bound, but some suggestions for time limits, petitions, whether or not there'd be a certain percentage. I'm wondering if it might make sense for us to come back with a proposal that is clearly delineating our guidelines and ask for the board to affirm that that's the standard that we would be considering in all requests. I don't, if that makes sense as an action item for a future meeting that may or may not be about a specific yes or no, based on the timeframe that might make sense for what you guys are considering. But I think it would provide.
No, I do think we need to make specific decisions about the guidelines. And if you don't feel like you're ready to do that tonight, then we could make that an agenda item for the fifteenth. Then I think we'd have to talk about whether we felt like we could still consider the Westford request on the fifteenth once we had those guidelines agreed upon. Okay? All right, last time, Rosie, I've got, oh, no, Virginia's got the microphone. I do, wow, I do wanna open it up to others in the audience. So maybe the best thing we can do is for you to pull together your questions and send them to me and I'll get responses for you. If you, I'll give you one last chance, Virginia.
Okay, I thought you said about the, like, certain amount of time. Do you think we could, like, have like a sort of trial thing to see, like, fly it for a certain amount of time and see if it's helping, making a difference and then potentially fly it for longer?
I think you're hearing that based on our, the advice we've gotten from legal counsel, that initially we would approve it for a, a shorter period of time. I think if that generated some amazing conversation and you wanted to come back to the board at a later time with a further request, that would be very appropriate. Okay? All right, are there others in the audience who wish to speak on the subject of flying the Black Lives Matter flag? Yes, why am I blanking on your name? Darcy, of course. Could you grab the microphone?
Voice case.
Just a comment to the students. I admire your interest and the fact that you are not only espousing values but taking action on them. I just wanna say I admire that. And also regardless of how the board acts on this, you're all winners in my book.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darcy. Are there others who wish to speak? Okay, I'll go to the back and then, yes, and then to.
My name's Dave Whitney, I'm a student lecturer. I was just curious, is, is the discussion about the Black Lives Matter flag or just displaying it on the flagpole?
This is, this, this discussion is about the request from the students to fly the flag on the flagpole. And it's about what guidelines the board will make in order to consider such requests.
So is there a limitation to where they could display the flag if it wasn't on the flagpole?
That's a good question.
Like, an example, the board oversees the flagpole, that's why it has to go to the board.
I think if they wanted to put the flag up in the school, that would be up to the principal.
And what if it was displayed elsewhere on the outside of the school?
I think that's an administrative decision. It's really the, the flagpole why it ends up coming to the board.
Right, so I think again, that's probably the principal.
Okay, and I also wanted to add that I recall in the discussion, there was a suggestion that it may only be these three students. But I recall from the last meeting that the process that they described that I heard was that they had the idea, they had a group of peers, they approached the principal. The principal was, was okay with it, but said, hey, you know what? You need to come to the faculty and present it to the faculty. And they presented it to the faculty and received a, you know, a nice, a warm reception. And then they said, well, you need to also present it to the student body, in which case they visited a number of classrooms. So they've gone through, in my mind, a vetting process within the school itself. And so this question about signing a petition, especially if the children are cognitively to that level where they can understand, I, I have a couple of questions. One, it seems to me like they've already received approval from the school and.
Not to fly the flag. They, this, it's good, sorry to interrupt you, Dave. The board has control over the flag.
I, I understand the board has control of the flagpole. However, the board doesn't have control of the day-to-day activity within the school. Like you said, flying it anywhere else on the property would be up to the school, right? So the students came here after they had approached the school. So in essence, the school, meaning the faculty members, the teachers, the community, they said, hey, yeah, this is a good idea, but in order, we can't fly it because we have to get approval to put it up the flagpole. So they came here. So they've already gone through a vetting process and have approval from the school. So going back and asking for a petition to be signed by fifth through eighth graders, doesn't that seem like it's a back step? And if you were to follow through with that, would you keep a written record of the students that signed the petition?
What we're trying to do is establish guidelines that can be used in every instance where we get a request to put something on the flagpole. So the petition piece isn't really about the Westford student request. It's about the legal advice that we've gotten about the guidelines we should set.
Well, with all due respect, I, I think that the Black Lives Matter initiative is not just a fad or even a religious intolerance issue. This is about the birth of our country and the history of our country. So from its inception, before we became a country, we had slaves here that came from Africa. And it continues to be an underserved community. And so raising that awareness, I believe, is more of a national issue than some, a, a, a cause in the Middle East that isn't necessarily associated with the flag that we're flying on our flagpole for our country. So that's all I would have, thank you.
I'm gonna give others an opportunity, Becky. Yep, that's right.
So I'm Becky and I'm from Westford. I really admire the students for bringing this up. That's, that's great. You guys are gonna be the leaders in our coun, country eventually. I do have concerns about Black Lives Matter, though. I'm not, I don't have enough information, so I, I'm coming at this with, you know, being kind of naive. What I've read, and I've tried to dig into it deeper about what Black Lives Matter is, there's a lot of politics with it that could go either way. I guess I would suggest to still acknowledge that Black Lives Matter, that maybe another kind of flag that doesn't necessarily represent Black Lives Matter itself. Because I, I do think, like I said, I think there is some controversy around that movement. And I think we need to delve into that piece a little bit more before agreeing to this. Thank you.
Are there others in the audience who wish to speak? Pardon? Yes.
Good evening. Good night, and for the opportunity to comment. I'm John Rory, I live in Essex Junction. And I have a short statement here, but it's reasonably short. I am a member of a racial justice group here in Essex, a local group. I'm also a member of the Racial Justice Task Force at the Unitarian Universalist Church downtown. And I'd like to note that we now have on our front lawn at the UU church, a banner saying, "Black Lives Matter." However, tonight I'm speaking only as, on my own behalf as a resident, resident of Essex. I am in support of hanging a Black Lives Matter flag at Westford School. I'm also a supporter of the Black Lives Matter movement. There are a lot of unfortunate misunderstandings about the phrase, "Black Lives Matter" versus "All Lives Matter." Of course, all lives matter. Unfortunately, at this time in this country, some lives don't matter as much, especially for black people and other people of color. So until all, until all lives matter equally, the Black Lives Matter movement will be necessary. We need to level the playing field. Not everyone was born on third base like most of us whites were. Some people believe or assert that Black Lives Matter is a racist organization, is prone to violence, is anti-police and anti-white. I've seen that on the front porch boards. This simply isn't true. I'll have to read quickly a couple of the guiding principles of the Black Lives Matter global network. First one is diversity. We are committed to acknowledging, respecting, and celebrating differences and commonalities. The second one is restorative justice. We are committed to collectively, lovably, and courageously working vigorously for freedom and justice for black people and by extension to all people. As we forge our path, we intentionally build and nurture a beloved community that is bonded together through a beautiful struggle that is restorative, not degrading. So once again, I thank you for the opportunity to comment. I very appreciate the hard work this board does and has done. And really honor your dedication and service to this community. Thank you much.
Any others want to speak? Yes, go here and then to Julia.
Good evening. My name is Ed Dodgeron. I live here in the Village. I've lived here since the early 50s, so I've been around quite a while. I'm also a veteran. I've, I'm a retired master sergeant, 30 years in, in uniform. And I have some comments from these three pieces of paper here. These were some things that I downloaded tonight, this evening, before coming here. I am not a Black Lives Matter supporter. Mainly because my son is a deputy sheriff in Jacksonville, Florida. He patrols the west side of Jacksonville, which is a very, very dangerous neighborhood. He has told me, his fellow officers have told me that when white police officers go cruising through west Jacksonville, on many, many occasions, black people come out on their front desks, on their front decks or porches, guns in hand, rifles in hand, AK-47s in hand, just waiting for a white cop to stop. And so whenever they respond to a call, it's never one officer responding. It's two or more because there is safety in numbers. Okay? Now, let me, let me just read some of this, let me just read some of this stuff. This one was from John Corazo from July 12, 2016. And this is about Black Lives Matter, a movement built on lies. It is not a movement of diversity. It is a movement of killing white people and especially killing police. They do it on a regular basis. They tell us that African-Americans are a hunted and endangered species, moved down by, or mowed down by blue uniformed white sadists who are animated by bloodlust, bigotry, and dreams of genocide. It turns out that all, that of all the people who have been killed by police in the United States in the recent years, about 42% were white, 20% were Hispanic, and 32% were black. Blacks committed nearly 39 of the types of serious crimes most likely to result in a violent confrontation with police. Last year was typical, last year being 2015. 494 serious crimes most likely to result in a violent confrontation with police. Last year, oh, I'm repeating myself. Last year was typical. 494 whites and 258 blacks were killed by police. And what do the race-obsessed demagogues of facts don't matter have to say about this? Nothing, because facts don't matter. I didn't have enough time to put this together properly, so it may seem a little choppy and I apologize for that. The President of the United States, and we're talking about President Obama when he was in office, Oprah Lee un equivocally, unequivocally supports a racist terror group that is committed to the slaughter of police officers and the breakdown of law and order. And that is what Black Lives Matter is about, the breakdown of law and order to satisfy their whims and their wants. Here's another piece, five things to know about Black Lives Matter. I'll go through just a couple. Black Lives Matter pushes a false narrative based on lies, one of them being they're committed to diversity. They're not. They're committed to subjugating whites and killing police. And by the way, people will think I'm a racist. I'm not. I've been around...
Hard to believe.
Well, I've been around different cultures my whole life. I grew up in Army frat. I spent time in the Army. I have shared foxholes with people of color, people I had to depend upon to keep me safe. And those were good people. The Black Lives Movement earned its claim to fame by promoting the lie that Michael Brown was fatally shot by white officer Darren Wilson while he was surrendering with his hands up. Wrong. Brown was believed to have been reaching for Wilson's gun moments before he was shot and killed in an act of self-defense by the police officer. Two, Black Lives Matter calls for anarchy and they follow through on it. Black Lives Matter protesters, their staple chant is, no justice, no peace. They have also explicitly called to dismantle the system. And in Ferguson, Missouri, this is just after Michael Brown was shot and killed, Black Lives Matter movement set the city of Ferguson, Missouri on fire. Innocent people have their businesses trashed and looted while the peaceful people of Missouri, blacks and whites, awaken to find their city in shambles. Now I'll go to my third piece. This is by Heather McDonald.
F, we have limited time. Could you?
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll sum up.
Thanks.
You're proposing, or these students are proposing, that a Black Lives flag fly on a flagpole underneath the Stars and Stripes of the United States. I find that highly, highly offensive. They are a terrorist organization. They have demonstrated that they're a terrorist organization. And they have no business on a flagpole with the, the flag of the United States. Thank you.
Okay. Right behind you, right here.
Right behind you.
That's fine.
And I'm a nervous public speaker. My name is Julia Andrews. I live in Westford. I am not the parent of one of these kids, but I thought it was important to spend two hours on a Tuesday here to support them because they go to school with my kids. And this is the school that my kids go to. Actually, technically, one of them lives here now, but... I am sad to report to this board that both of my kids in Westford School have had friends who are of different races. And those families have reported really difficult experiences as a result of that. And I hate to think of that happening in our town, but that's the reality of what happens when you don't look like everybody else. So I think this is really relevant and really important, and especially in a town like Westford where almost everybody is white, to send a signal and a message to that small percentage of people who may feel left out or different or excluded or hurt, that we are in support of them in our community. I also just wanted to kick the tires a little bit on the advice from legal counsel because when I, I've sit on boards or I've sat on boards, I've worked in business where advice of legal counsel is also very important. And this advice to me, when I hear it, sounds like advice given to protect this board from public criticism versus legal action. And the reason I say that is because, there's a couple of reasons. One, it's very nonspecific. So I'm like, that doesn't sound like the typical legal advice that I hear. And the other thing that I'm just sitting here thinking is, you know, I have a child who identifies as gay. So if her and the other one, two, three kids in the whole school who identify that way wanted to raise a pride flag and they put together their presentation, they jumped through all the hoops, and they're like the only kids in the school that are gay, in middle school. If everyone remembers what middle school was like, probably not 100% friendly to difference. And then to ask them to find the kids that are going to support them? Why? I think the whole point of raising this flag is to say, it doesn't matter if you are in the majority. It matters that you exist. We acknowledge you. And I think asking for a petition just feels like an unnecessary step to continue to make these kids prove it. And they, I, I just disagree with that. So I guess I would encourage the board to maybe go back to the legal counsel and kick the tires a little and ask him, what was the impetus for these questions? Just because it was done this way before, I don't think that our board needs to do it this way. So, thank you very much.
All right. All right, last comment, Belle, we have other agenda, so...
I'm going to stand. I'm going to try to keep this short. But what you said, it, it was kind of what I was expecting if we did fly the Black Lives Matter flag from people who don't support us. And hearing him, I obviously disagreed, but I'm going to try to keep my opinions to the side on this. But I wanted to ask you, with your lawyer's opinion on raising it for one to two weeks, was this, did he, does he have a reason for this? Is it because he doesn't want to see too much hate from people? Because if that's the case, like, I'm willing to read every letter. I'm willing to listen to every call. And I'm willing to read every social media post, post about this from people who either hate or are agreeing with us. So I just wanted to ask if he had a legitimate reason for one to two weeks.
Thanks. We'll, we'll talk about that as part of finalizing our guidelines. Okay, thanks, Belle. All right, thank you, everyone, for taking the time to come tonight and participate as part of this discussion. As we talked about earlier, I do think we will try to set up some, at least one, if not more, community engagement opportunities. Because I think this is a subject where we do need to hear from each other. So, all right. The next item on the agenda is Essex High School grading, Rob. Why don't you sit at the corner of the table? That would be perfect. Do you, Beth, do you want to frame this?
Sure. So we asked Rob to come and present the grading. And we know that it has, people have wanted to hear about a change in grading. We've had a petition from parents. We had a petition from students. And Rob has been working on this with faculty and knew, especially with proficiency-based learning coming along, that it was going to change anyways. But we did ask him to come and present the current and then what the proposed is for next year.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say I appreciate the opportunity to converse with the Voices for Education and the students who had the petition and the adults who had the petition. And Matt, I think it was in July or, I think it's July, January, February, it was. And it was productive. So tonight, this is a result of working with faculty and speaking to students. And basically, the, I guess I would say the two points, if there are two points, would be to be more in line with other like high schools in Chittney County as compared to another feeling of if we do this or considering modification, it would lower our standards. So the two perspectives then have played out for a period of time. So what is up, and Brian, thank you for driving. I appreciate that. The slide you see there is what is on our school profile sheet, which is the current grading scale. And on the bottom, the last two years, this year and last, we've been using a one through four rubric in terms of engagement and wording by students and work completion. With one being low, four being exceeding, three would be proficient, as an example. And that's, that's reported out when the parents get into the Power School portal. They can see those items as well. So that's the current situation. Proposed for 2018-19, I think people can see that it is different than what the current grading scale is. Very much aligned with other high schools in Chittney County. The one, perhaps caveat would be at the bottom of the slide, NM, meaning not met. And that's basically to follow along to a certain degree what Superintendent Cobb was saying in regards to proficiency-based learning. We don't need 59 points of failure or 69 points of failure using the current system. We want to try and incentivize students who may not have been successful on their first try of an assessment and provide opportunities for them to improve and not have to wait for the following September to take an assessment again. And, and the idea would be to keep students more engaged, not to have failed classes and not to have to repeat classes at another time, whether it's another year, if it's a year-long course, or another semester, if it's a semester-long course. Now, like everything, the NM would not stay there forever. It would then, at the end of the school year, if the student has not demonstrated proficiency by the end of that time, that it would revert to a point zero, like an F would be if you were to use that analogy. So that is what, after some work with faculty, basically after the Voices for Education communication, feedback, speaking to students, meeting with Matt, whenever it was, January, February, that is what we have come up with. And there is also an additional slide, which is a tag along because we didn't have room for it. So if Brian, he would go. Also, as a result of Act 77 by the graduating class of 2020, there are transferable skills, which our faculty unanimously accepted a year ago. And part of our work this year as a staff has been to work on creating rubrics of the five transferable skills that students, starting with the class of 2020, need to demonstrate once in their multiple experiences that they have here at Essex High School. And as you can see, clear and effective communication, self-direction, responsible and informed citizenship, creative and practical problem-solving, informed and integrated thinking. Now, as faculty, we've, we've worked through the first four. We're spending the month of May on the fifth transferable skill. And you may be wondering, how will they be recorded? They'll be recorded in Power Schools similar to the first slide you saw where we're now... where we're now currently recording engagement and learning and work habits. And that would be a similar opportunity for parents to see that skill. That does not relate academically to, directly to biology, or algebra, or world history, or whatever. But it's part of Act 77 that we want all our graduates to be able to demonstrate. As an aside, some of our board members have been at some of our STEM, AVPA, or Global Leadership Program internship presentations by students, or capstone presentations. And I can tell you that each and every student, clear and effective communication, it would be checked off the box in terms of probably standing, at least with the ones I've seen over the years. But this is one of the tenants, if you will, of Act 77 in terms of proficiency-based learning, grading, and reporting, that we're going to start to introduce next year, because it's getting closer to 2020. And we feel we're in a good place for that. So, the previous slide, and this slide is what we are looking to implement for next year.
Can I just add something with the transferable skills? So when you move to the proficiency-based, just a clarification for people, is that when you move to the proficiency-based and you are grading towards that way, you are really grading what the content that they know, and not whether they complete their work, but do they know their content? And then the transferable skills are scored alongside of that. So, in the past, in history, as when we all went to school, it was all mixed up. So if you didn't do your homework, or you were a lazy student, but you could be right on with math and understand it so well. So this takes that away, and it's scored separately.
Well, and not only that, it was very, I would agree, it was also very inconsistent across classrooms. And we're really trying to tighten it up and make it more consistent, so it doesn't matter necessarily, you know, who the instructor is, but it's gonna be consistent across content areas and, of course, across the high school.
Right, and that is everywhere. People weighted it differently. It wasn't just here at Essex, but it's everywhere. So this makes it clearer for students.
The other thing I would add, just for everybody's benefit, is Essex, among a few schools, has been part of the Great Schools Partnership, League of Innovative Schools. And some of you know Reed Dyer, who's from Portland, Maine, who we've been working with the last few years. We've been involved with great schools for six years now, and we have some good relationships with other high schools. Obviously, we have very good relationships with the principals and schools in Chittenden County. But more than that, Noble High School in Maine, there's a few schools in Rhode Island, Conner in West Hartford, Connecticut. So what that has allowed us to do, not just administrators, but more importantly, teachers, and this year, students, because Jamal and Tess have traveled to Providence before the blizzard in March. And it's a good opportunity to see what's going on throughout New England, so that we get the best learning opportunities for all our kids moving forward. Because quite frankly, what we needed to have graduated high school and what our students now need to have are a little different. And we want to make sure that we provide the optimal opportunity, opportunities plural, for our students moving forward. So that's kind of part and parcel of what we're doing for ourselves now. So those are the three slides. I tried to keep it simple, tried to keep it straightforward. And that's where we are.
Okay, as we did with the Black Lives Matter, we'll have a board discussion first, and then I'll open it up to the audience if folks in the audience have questions. Diane.
Okay, my first question is, when did the grading system go to 4.3? Because, you know, the gray here says that I went through where an A was a four. So when did this materialize? And why has it gone to 4.3?
Eight, eight or nine years ago, perhaps. I don't have a specific year.
Okay. So why are we at 4.3 for an A+?
Recognize the A+ versus the A.
Is above the A, right? So there's a delineation between the A+ and the A.
Okay, so is this reflective of AP subjects?
We don't, no. I thought it would be for a minute. I was gonna say, whoa. As far as I know, it's my understanding that maybe outside of RICE, there's no high school in Chittenden County that weights grades. So I'm not exactly sure what RICE does. But I do believe they do weigh some grades, as compared to whether they're AP or honors. But we have always chosen not to, which would be consistent with any public schools.
Keely.
I just want to say I appreciate the complexities of this issue and the listening that you've done on the issue. I remember I went and did my master's degree in England, and my first big graded assignment, because they only assess you in England like once, or maybe three times a year, depending on your program, I got a 78. And everyone was like, that's astounding. I'm like, their grading scale is from 60 to 80. Now, when I had to report that to PhD programs in the States, it needed some explanation. So usually, these four-point grades are coming from being translated from a grade between 60 to 100. So it is complicated that now we have the proficiency-based grades being reported originally as a one through four. And if there's any way that we can put an, you know, asterisk and inform people, this is not translated from an 85 read-up about what we're doing, I think that'll be very helpful.
Patrick.
Rob, what was the reasoning behind the former grading scale? Like, was, or was there one, are you aware of it? Just wondering if there was some advantage that was, you know, 20 years ago?
Well, to back up, not going too deep into history, because the current system has been in place for many years. But other schools have had other systems in place, more similar looking to what is currently in place. So there have been changes throughout the years, throughout times, with other, we'll just keep the conversation of public high schools in Vermont. And others have made modifications over the years, and we have chosen not to, because the prevailing theme would have been, from within the school, would have been that we would be lowering our standards if we did that. So there's been a lot of work, been a lot of conversations. And I will be the first to admit that what is proposed is certainly not unanimous at the school. But I think we've made some good strides, progress. And I think some of that has to do with the evolving of the proficiency-based system moving forward. And also, some of the, we had two community forums in May, two years ago. And we had close to 80 people both nights, and they were talking about grading, proficiency-based grading. And what, there were a lot of middle school parents at that meeting at the time. And a lot of the feedback there was moving forward to go slow, because we didn't want change to be, they didn't want us to be the first out of the chute. I totally understand that. To go slow, be thoughtful, be reflective. And so, you know, I think we have, and at the same time, we have that piece, and we have the merger. And we're doing fine, we're working through that. And then there's 2020, which is when we're trying to get to a better place. So this proficiency-based learning component is forcing us to look at a lot of different things, like reassessment opportunities, proficiency or standard recovery, maybe how we use exam week differently. I mean, so, I mean, I don't want to turn this meeting into a sideshow, but I mean, there's a lot more to this than meets the eye. And I am very, I am very sensitive and appreciative of the concerns of the petitioners, which is why we've taken, well, if it was January, it's four or five months to get to this point. But we have to, we have to work it through from the inside as well.
Thank you.
Kim.
I guess, and very appreciative to see some movement on this, Rob. Act 77 was from 2013. So I know the deadline for it is that our graduating 2020 kids will meet all the things put out in Act 77, but it's not a new law. So I know that's something we've been working on. It's independent from this conversion question. And I'm really grateful to see that we're going to pull our kids into alignment with our competing schools, I guess, if you will. I know that we don't really compete with our Chittenden County peers, but we are, our kids are applying to the same schools, they're coming from the same areas. I think it would be
On this one factor, yes, you're correct.
Important that our numbers are aligning with one another, despite the fact, I know we have profile sheets, we've got a bunch of kids who've gone through the process, and one still to come. So on that point, because this is purely a matter of math, I'm wondering why this would not take effect until next year? Because I am sensitive to the fact that any student applying early action in the fall would have a transcript that is only from the end of this year. And I can't understand why a math conversion couldn't happen to be effective for the end of 2018.
Well, I certainly can get back to you in a couple of weeks, because I'd rarely want to think through all the consequences, both intended and unintended, if we were to retroactively change grades from years past.
I guess, so this is just converting numbers, though? Is that, am I understanding it differently? We're not looking for standards to be aligned? We're not looking for, you know, a teacher, two different teachers teaching the same class to come to agreement? We are taking numbers on a 1 through 100 scale and making them numbers on a whatever through 4.3 scale. And so it doesn't strike me that it's compromising the integrity of the grade that the teacher gave, nor is it, you know, lowering the standards or any other suggestion. It looks to me like straight-up math, that we will have an entire, another class of students applying to colleges without the advantage of this.
Just like I said, I'll get back to you on that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Because I'm not gonna make a decision right now.
Understood. I think the timing's important.
And to be clear, the standards or the proficiencies the teachers have agreed upon, for example, there are ranging from five to eight course proficiencies, essential learnings, must-haves before students exit a course, that all algebra teachers have agreed upon, all chemistry teachers have agreed upon, all jewelry teachers have agreed upon, and everywhere in between. So that's where you get the standards and the alignment and the common assessments that occur as we are evolving towards the proficiency-based system. But to your point, there's a few questions I would want to have answered before I would answer that.
Thank you.
I do have just other question, Kim.
I have one more question on the transferable skills piece. And I appreciate that the academies do a great job with their capstone for students. Would there be consideration that, is it either likely to become the case that every student is enrolled in one of our academies, or as we expand academy offerings? Or is it reasonable to expect that every student might be working towards some sort of capstone, either through their advisories, whether or not they're part of an academy? Simply because that
That's a good question. I guess my answer to that right now would be, I would not expect every student to choose an academy, because we have three. And I think three is what we could sustain and do well. And I think we really do a great job with our AVPA, STEM, and Global Leadership. That being said, to your point, I think every student needs to, for their marketability as they move from adolescence to adulthood, be able to demonstrate, in many ways, those transferable skills, hence the term transferable. So whether we get to a point where through advisory or some other mechanism, we get to all students developing a capstone project, that would be a desired outcome, and it's something that would take some additional time. And we've intentionally started the AVPA and STEM, and now Global Leadership, based upon student interest and faculty interest, and really, community interest, our community, a few years ago. And now we're seeing the fruits of that, and we've worked some of the kinks out. And once again, I encourage you to come to any of the presentations that our students give, and it's just, it makes you feel good. It's a feel-good night. But you raise a good point. But I really believe that that's, who would argue about any graduate needing those skills, regardless of career path, moving forward? I think that's a must-have.
Or the academies that you'd like to send to every, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks, Belle.
Yep.
So I should have prefaced this discussion by saying, this is not a board decision. It is an administrative decision. But it is being brought to the board tonight for information purposes. So before I open it up to the audience, to board members, any further questions? Okay, anybody in the audience wish to comment? Okay, so let's find that microphone. And if
It's on the floor.
Yeah. If you could identify yourself and, given the lateness of the hour, if you could be succinct as possible, we would appreciate that. Okay, I'll start with you, Matt.
I'm gonna try without the microphone. I put together a presentation that I think has been superseded by
So, that we have that.
Okay, if anybody wants to tap in. I think a lot of it's been superseded by what Rob said. So I think maybe what I ought to do is just to address some of the discrete issues that Rob is talking about. So I think my first point is that we live in a highly competitive world. Our students compete not only with students in Chittenden County, but compete with students around the world. And it's really important that we communicate their success to other institutions. And part of the grading scale and the sheet that we sent around, which is the school profile, is about communicating that success to other institutions. So I think unfortunately, up until now, we have been communicating that our students are, and it's inadvertent, but unfortunately, we've been communicating that our students are fundamentally worse than students in other school districts around the area. And that's simply a matter of the school profile sheet and the way our grading system conversion works. I understand Rob's point about, you know, we don't want to lower standards, but there's a difference between standards and communication of success. And I think what the grading scale and the GPA scale changing that does is allow us to communicate that success to everybody in all of the institutions that are recipients of the information we're getting. So instead of sending the message that the students are worse than students in other Chittenden area schools, the message we should be sending is that the Essex students are as good or better than the students in the local area. So I think the new scale right there does that. I think that is an excellent place to start. There are a couple of issues that I have with the next slide after that, which is, I have a few concerns about. And it's similar to what, I think it's Keely said, about the 78. The issue with a 1 to 4 grading scale is that 1 to 4 already has a meaning. And when you adopt a 1 to 4 grading scale, you unconsciously absorb some of the meaning that comes with a 4.0 scale. So if you're really trying to move to a new system of proficiency-based grading, I would urge you to unlink the numbers and try to come up with numbers that are different from 1 to 4 or 4.0 scale. I also, this is a piece of personal history, I also got a 78. And the institution that I was going to recognize that the communication that was going out there was that I had gotten a C+, which it didn't. But the thing that the institution did, which was very forward-thinking, is they said, we have a communication problem. We don't have a problem with our students. Our students are great, our teachers are great. What we really have is a communication problem. So what they did is they put a 1 in front of all of our grades. So over the course of a decade, my grade improved by 100 points by, through new effort of my own. So I wound up getting 178 instead of a 78. But that's the, and when employers started seeing that, they understood that something wasn't quite right, you know? So they had to dig deeper. So if you're gonna go to a system that has a 1 to 4, has a proficiency-based system with four gradations, I would urge you to move from something different than 1 to 4, maybe 5 to 8, or some other system like that. So it's clear to whoever's reviewing it, it's not something that they can just plug into formally. They have to look more deeply. The other issue that I think is really important to me is how the transition is going to be handled, and the retroactivity piece of this. Because this is fundamentally a communication issue, if you don't do the transition correctly, you could end up, again, communicating the wrong information. So if you So if you don't go back and change the grades before and then send out a school profile sheet with, with, with the, the second slide, you could end up inadvertently hurting your students by not taking the grades that they got their freshman and sophomore years and updating them and, and including them in the new system. So the old numbers that they had would unintentionally weigh down the average of the, of their high school record and the communication that you get in the school sheet could inadvertently communicate the wrong message about their achievement. So I think it's really, the details are extremely important in how this is, how the transition is done, which means I think the school profile sheet has to be done correctly. And I also think that the, the numbers have got to be done correctly because you could inadvertently, and a lot of people don't see this very subtle issue, so they wouldn't know to correct it. But you have to have the numbers done correctly when you recalculate everything and you update the stuff in Power School and you recalculate all the numbers. Otherwise, we could be back in exactly the same situation we're in now, which is unintentionally communicating the wrong message about the success of our students. So those, those are the few comments that I had.
Hi, my name's Erin Ross. I actually started the petition among voters and I just want to thank Mr. Reardon for being so responsive and actually listening to us. And I think what you captured with the new GPA scale is exactly what people were looking for. And just to answer what you were saying about a 4.3, that actually is what the other schools in Chittenden County do. CBU, MMU, they're all out of a 4.33 scale, or 4.3 scale, and I can understand that's a little confusing, but it's not something that will negatively impact students. And that's what primarily parents and voters were concerned about was, in the past, because the way the Essex GPA scale was functioning, it was, it was inadvertently hurting students that were trying to get scholarship money because their GPAs were lower than a cutoff and it was impacting them when they were applying to college. So I think this is a huge change in the right direction. And I would echo what Matt said about the transferable skills. It's, I mean, that's great, you have to do it under state law. And it seems like the communication that you're having with the words is more effective than the one to four. So that's something to consider because, again, one through four is like GPA, but when you say things like, this person is proficient, or this person is exceeding the standard, that has a different meaning that people could look beyond and I think wouldn't get confused with college. And then just to echo what Kim had said, I think this doesn't have to be as complex, at least the way I see it, in terms of retroactivity or anything. I think every, you know, at Essex, there's always been a numerical system, which all the parents understand, the kids understand. And if you take, it's when your GPA gets calculated, when it gets sent to colleges, that gets converted into the GPA that's going to communicate, that's the way colleges make decisions. They look at GPAs and unfortunately, as the Wall Street Journal tells us, now they only have eight minutes to really review a student. So it's important that we communicate it in a way that can be understood by the colleges. But I don't think it would be a problem to actually implement it for the junior class this year. I think that's what the people on the petition were hoping, is that it would be able to be effective for this class before another class of students is negatively impacted. And I think what you could do, because the way I understand it, if I'm wrong, is after they finish their junior year, that's when their GPA is actually calculated by the guidance department, where it gets transferred from a number into a GPA. So something to consider, if you could go back, that would be great.
I would just point out that the transferable skills piece, we also are keeping an eye on our neighbors, so we don't want to report differently as compared to the other high schools.
Again, Darcy Brulette, full disclosure, I'm also the mom of a junior. And I'd like to see her applications to college, actually, all three years, ninth, 10th, and 11th, to have this new system so that there's not confusion between 11th grade grades and that fall semester of senior year. In terms of transferable skills, I love them. I also work in a high school and I believe we don't use one through four. What we use is working towards, so a W, meets, which is an M, and E, which is exceeds. So that's how we've done it and parents are pretty clear on what that means. As a, as a teacher, trying to get a student to meet or exceed those standards, it's a little frustrating because it's no longer credit-based and I can't threaten them with the fact that they don't have their English credit or math credit. I tutor students, so I'm working with all subject areas. But I love the transferable skills and I think Essex is doing a great job communicating those.
Hi, my name's Lori and I've, I live in Essex Junction. I have a daughter who's a ninth grader in high school. So two things, first Erin, I want to thank you to you for starting that petition because I was unaware of this until that came across my email. Thank you. So it could have been a better job communicating to the parents because I didn't know this. And I want to thank you for making the change. I think it's going to have a positive impact on our students, our kids. I felt like we were handicapping them and they're competing with, you know, students from other countries, with, from students from other states where maybe the rigor is different than in Vermont. And we are giving them, and we're putting their grades down. So like you said, they only have a few minutes to evaluate and it'd be great if we could, you know, have a big translation that all the college admission officers could look through and understand, but they're not going to do that. They're looking at a number, they're looking at, you know, standardized test scores and that's pretty much all they have time for. So I appreciate this change and I would also ask, if it's possible, to start with this, this ninth grade class so that they have the benefit of these, of this change in grades for their entire four years. If you're going to make these changes anyway, I think what you said about pulling the grades down, if it's not converted, is, is a reasonable thing to do. So thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks for being responsive.
I'm Miki Chisholm. I have a senior in high school and a sophomore in high school. I really appreciate the change of the GPA scale. I think our Essex students work really hard for their grades because we do have so much rigor. So to get, you know, an excellent grade, which might be an 88, and have it affect potentially some of the things we value, which is access to education. And that comes through the grades and getting in the schools and then it comes through getting the funding. And I had the experience at the college fair at UVM of having two schools tell me that they take the grade off the transcript and they don't translate for admission. And then many state schools outside of Vermont, potentially in Vermont, but many of the state schools have these scholarships that are just merit-based, based on GPA and SAT or ACT scores. So just two factors. So I, I do think we do a great job with our students as, you know, they get, some, a lot of students or some students get into excellent schools. And then there's some average students that just want to get into the schools that they are prepared for and get some funding. So I appreciate this change and I hope that the GPA can change as everybody else has said for all four years.
Full disclosure to the audience, I have two children, both graduates of Essex High School, 2014 and 2016.
Hi, I'm Robin Rose Astor. I'm the parent of a current junior, have two graduated from here. And I've been at these meetings for years advocating for this because I'm also a college admissions officer at St. Michael's College. And I've felt that this grading scale for a long time has been a disadvantage to students in Essex. And I think it's important to reiterate that this isn't just a risk to students at the higher level. This actually, I think, has even more pivotal impact for students that fall to the middle or lower level. And when we talk about recalculating the GPA on the current scale, you know, I'm curious about what we're going to do with the kids who've had between a 61 and a 69 the past ten, four years, if we convert, because now they technically haven't failed the class, but according to the old grading scale they had. So that will be something interesting to try to figure out. But I honestly, this is a great move forward. I applaud people that have come forward again and brought this to the attention. I think we're way overdue in making this change, so thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Matt, I have two kids at high school now. As a parent of, one of the parents that was here during the middle school talks, where I would have advocated to pump the brakes on the proficiency-based grading, trying to understand exactly the impacts. I would advocate now for stepping on the gas. I really feel very strongly that this is important. Do it retroactively, do it tomorrow. I'll do the math for you. I very much thank you for your receptiveness to this. I think it's important. It shows a commitment to our kids and understanding, taking an objective look at what's best for them, which I think is really important. I do think that showing on the next slide the proficiency thing, going with the wording-based scale means that you can't average the grades, which is important in something like proficiency. That would decouple it from something that, you know, one to four scale is known. And I do think absolutely that our kids are competing for acceptance into college, merit-based financial aid. And so I think using a standardized grading formula, it very least puts them on level. So it really is, I feel strongly it's very important. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, I think we've heard lots of people say the same thing, but thank you. As I've said before, this is an administrative decision, but we wanted to hear what Rob was thinking and we wanted to give folks an opportunity to have something to say. I don't, let me just say this, I hope, Rob, as you look at what to do about past grades, that you talk to some other school districts and try to find out what they've done during the conversion. As a former teacher, I don't see it as a straight mathematical exercise. And people may not like to hear that, but I don't. So I'll be interested to hear what you come back and say. Okay, this was a big meeting. Lots of public here and that was wonderful. I think we're at the end of the agenda. Oh, the start and stop times.
I'll be fast.
Okay, great, thanks, Beth.
I'll put my Massachusetts skills on and talk really fast. Okay, so start and, start, start and end times. So we did many public engagements. We knew that, as we looked at it, we started by working with the leadership team and just putting the, the time down for the minutes of instruction. And when we started to look at that, there was a big discrepancy. We also started to look at it as our early release days. Brian and I were like, why are they so different? How can we have these different? And as you can see, for, which column is it, Brian? The duration of the student days. It was the last one. So we started to really look at that and didn't think that was okay. We wanted the same across for all students. So, okay, now you can go. And so we kept thinking about the three ideas as we were looking at start and stop times. We wanted a common duration of the school day at grade levels, so not necessarily the same for kindergarten students as high school students, but at, looking at grade level spans and talking with the leadership team and working with them as grade level principals. And then a later start for our older students, which comes from a lot of research and we presented that many times. We shared that in our community forums, the three that we did. And then the last one was, we wanted to embed a collaborative work learning time for our staff. Number one, research says that the number one way to improve student improvement is through giving time for staff, for teachers, to work together and be aligned with their curriculum. It's teacher efficacy. So it really, that's the number one boost in how we can improve student achievement. So we knew we wanted that and we looked at different things. One of the first proposed was that we would do the duration of the day, which would be seven hours. We kept, we looked at Essex High School for, we kept that at the six hours and 35 minutes. This proposed on March 8th. This is what it wa- what?
This is what's the first proposal out of the gate to the board on March 8th.
Okay, thank you.
Had the sequencing of the youngest students starting at 7:45 and then increments of 15 minutes up to the high school.
You've still had this presentation a hundred times.
The big part that this presentation on, on March 8th had was that we were going to do an early dismissal K8
Right.
and a late arrival 912.
That's right. And then when we proposed this to community and staff too, to get some input, we, community was really about, let's keep that collaborative time the same day. Don't confuse us if we have to think about when high school students go, if they're going late or whatever. So that's one thing that we looked at. We, when we proposed it to the community on the first time, they thought that the duration to keep that the same. And then also to really look at the high school and the elementary school. If they, we had getting out at different times. The high school proposal was to start later and the parents were saying, but our high school students take care of our younger ones. Can they get home earlier? So then we redid it. And our next, what we ended up with after the third proposal, which is the final proposal, is we have a common duration time, which we started, which we wanted. And everybody agreed to looking through minutes per school. And then we wanted the earlier starts for younger students. As we know, as parents, you have a kindergartner, they're up and ready to go and a high school student's a little slower getting up and just their bodies. They want to be up late at night. And that's, that's when their minds are alert or later in the day. And so then we, the early time and end times at high school, they remain the same. We will take a year to really do more research with that and work with students and faculty on that. And I'll explain that in a minute a little more. So then the final decision, we will work with the high school. One of the biggest barriers that we faced was with the Career Tech Center. Because we receive students from other schools, we couldn't seem to align that. So if we had what research says, that high school is better off starting at a later time and we were going with 8:30, which isn't even the ideal time, but we were going to give some more time for them. It really, it didn't sit well with the Career Tech Center for buses getting there. So that would have had to be off on, it would have been out of whack. So what we will do is to take this next year and starting very soon is to really look at that and how can we think outside the box of how can we have that happen for high school students? And also, what does that look like for Career Tech Center? So our surrounding towns for high school go, have a later start, but what they do to get their students here, that's their first bus run and then they go back and pick up their high school students. So that's why our CTE students get here earlier. It's their first run. So what if, you know, we need to think about, so what if we push CTE way out? Maybe they could do interns first. So there's a lot to think about to try to figure out what's best for kids and research-based. The other piece is, what do we do about sports? We have had our other towns surrounding us have all figured that out. So anyways, we will continue to work on that. And so we did not change the high school time at all. We did keep a collaborative work learning time on the single day. It'll be Tuesday afternoons. It will be one hour difference. So this, if the students get out at 2:45, they will get out at 1:45. K8, there'll be four days of seven hours instruction, one day of a six-hour instruction, which is that early release. And then, and teachers will be able to work two and a half, two hours, two and a half hours together on some collaborative, so we can align across the district, which we have a lot of work to do around that with the merger. And then nine through 12, we'll have four days of six hours and 35 minutes and then one day of five. and then one day of five hours and 35 minutes. So that's the final schedule. Here it is. It was an administrative decision. We listened to the community. Again, we got input. We had over 100 people feedback through that. And it's been on Facebook and Front Porch Forum answering questions. I think that, I'm actually really proud of all the feedback that we've gotten and how we adjusted and continued to adjust, but stuck to our three big ideas. So our early release looks like that and it will be on Tuesdays. So we are not providing daycare during that hour. So we will have a bus come through and pick up students at this earlier time, but we are looking at having a later bus. We don't know, we haven't determined if that's feasible yet, but we do, we're definitely looking at that for a later bus to swing through. So if kids wanted to stay, we are working with after-school programs and other community partners to figure out what does that time look like. Our after-school programs that are already in our schools are really excited about this extra time that they have. One of the things it does with our younger group, especially at Essex Elementary School, the kids, when they arrive at school, will go straight to their classroom. When they leave, they will go right from the classroom to the bus. And right now, there's like a half hour wait, sometimes 45 minutes with kids in snowsuits waiting for the bus. So this is like in and out, which is great for the younger kids. You know, it's not a holding tank. And so, that's it. Questions from the board? This is the final. You up?
I said, if that actually happens, it will be amazing.
And these are, these-
I'm sorry not to express compliments.
This, these times aren't set in stone. It's what the proposed is, it's with the bus routes. So they will-
So you've got to look at busing first.
Right, we do. We do.
Okay, questions or comments from the board? Andre?
On the early release days, will there be provisions for the students regards to extracurricular activities that may start at a later time? Because I think I'll be allowed to stay at the school awaiting the start of that event or?
Yes, those are all things that we do have to work out too. I mean, high school students, it'll be an hour. My students, my own children went to a high school that had this and they either hung out in the library, got their homework done, which they really liked those days because then they weren't getting home late and trying to do homework. They also all ended up at our house because we lived in their high school. So they ate before they went. I mean, they were, high school kids are, that's fine. I think we have to really think about the middle school and what happens with them. But yes, those are all things to be worked out.
Sure.
Other questions from board members? Yes.
I know that the libraries pick up a lot of the influx of students getting out. Would you please coordinate with the libraries so that they are anticipating?
So they know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And like the NAST and all the other places kids go and hang out.
Yeah, all the usual hangouts. But I do know that the Brownell Library gets inundated with, with students and it's a good place for them to hang out.
It's a great place.
But it's awfully nice to know that they're, they're coming before they arrive.
We will do that in our community outreach, which we still would like to call community partners in to just brainstorm and talk with administrators, like what's the possibility? Even if there's Cub Scouts, can you offer that earlier now? Other things. So we still want to do that. And we will invite the libraries. Maybe they could do story hours for the younger kids.
They don't have to take kids without parents under age eight, I think.
Maybe they could go with a high school student.
Okay. Questions, comments? Anybody in the audience have a comment? Darcy?
I'm sorry. I know you've decided this for next year. I would urge you to consider lengthening the high school day in the future. I think the fact that we have our oldest kids for the shortest amount of time, when we are, next step is either college or technical programs or the workforce, they're the ones that I think should be here longer. So I'd urge you to-
Actually, colleges are going less time, but yes, I, we do have to look at that and that'll be in our whole year. That's why we stepped away.
I'm old fashioned enough to think that seat time actually matters.
Yes, yes. That's right.
So it's not going to benefit my family, my, I have a junior. But for the future of the community, I think that would be a good. And whether that's classes or it's other kind of programming, whenever you see-
I think it was so large to try to step in and make that decision that it wasn't well thought out. It was just like we were going, yes, this is what the research says, but now we need to, that's the age level that we wanted to step back and do a really good job with. And we agree. We've been-
Well, I mean, I think at some point, I think, you know, minds all of a sudden begin to realize the lessons that have been learned. And I think Rob and Essex Town and Essex High School learned the lesson that, you know, you can, you can make a change, but it exists within a system. And we changed the start of the high school by 29 minutes and we never changed the transportation schedule. So we just ended up bringing kids here earlier than when school started. So, I mean, all of a sudden it began to think of like, okay, that system is now one district. So we have this whole new opportunity to be able to work within ourselves. But our district also hosts a technical center that 116 of our students attend and it has 13 other sending partners. So it was that sense and, and honestly, it's, we cannot be the district that creates further barriers from participation in technical ed or we really kind of lose our, lose our position. So it was that matter of slowing down to speed up rather than speeding up and just kind of hoping that it would work.
Okay, anybody else? I thought, I saw someone in the back. Yes?
Really quickly, my name is Alexis DBF. I'm a parent of two boys at Founders. I am here to speak for the delayed school start time in the high school. I think eight is amazing. Eight thirty would be dramatically better. Nine would be ideal. Despite my disheveled appearance, I am actually a worldwide sleep expert. I research this for a living in the published office. And the evidence is overwhelming. And I know I talked to other parents who went to community outreach meetings and they would say, oh yeah, there's research. And I feel like, that feels like very amorphous. And I just wanted to say, A, I'm here as a resource if I can help in any way to help forward this cause. B, when we say research, what we're talking about is the health and well-being of our kids. And it relates to everything from decreased suicide rates, weight gain, depression, academic performance, sports performance, cancer. It is overwhelming on so many factors. And the schools that have made this change have seen the benefits time and time again. There are multiple studies. I have PowerPoint presentations from principals of schools who have done this. Student self-satisfaction scores go up, academic scores go up, college acceptance rates go up. It is, we are drowning in evidence that we are killing our children literally by forcing them to be sleep deprived chronically for four years in high school.
Would you like to lead our task team?
So I just wanted to say I fully support you. I understand the complexities and the effort involved. I know there's going to be pushback and complications and CTE. And I fully understand all of those things. I respect the effort you're putting in here. But it is of critical importance that we make this change and I really hope we can make it happen.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Patrick?
I'm the broken record when it comes to this, which is not real, not meant at all as criticism. It's just it's-
And you always phrase it that way.
Yeah. But it is a personal self-interest and it concerns me about the equity portion of this with the early release because my plan for next year with the early release schedule, knowing and supporting in every way, shape and form that teachers need the collaboration time, is that I have to pay babysitter $20 an hour to pick up my child on that Tuesday. And I have to repeat that four times now over the course of a month. And that $80, as I mentioned, covers a cell phone bill. You know, it covers what I pay in electrical. And I'm my, you know, myself and my partner, I would consider us relatively well off, but that's still a financial hit. And I know there are probably a dramatic number of people less well off in the community who have kids in those schools. So I just want to, I would love if we could be kept up to date and abreast of the community partners that we're reaching out to and how often and what their potential expansion might look like. Because if I can avoid needing to pay an extra $80 a month and if I'm, you know, someone who can afford it versus the people who can't or who have maybe two or three elementary school kids who would have to pay double or triple that, those are the people that I worry about. And I fear that that goes completely against the equity portion of what we evolved and striving for.
And we did talk with the after-school programs about the ability for them to help families in sliding scales and even a discount for that hour. Because if they come in to do that hour, they're going to be making money.
Yeah.
We also found that almost without exception, that at, at least at the beginning of school, every one of the after-school programs is maxed out, has been for a while. And that issue has never been a school board issue. So we, we know that right now, with even the lot, the time that we end at a full day, that our community is not able to absorb that care for parents that are working.
Yeah.
And that hasn't, we, we haven't come up and said, we need to do something about this. Because we need to have that be a community conversation. We need to make affordable childcare a reality as community members. And we can support that as a school as we do by bringing them in and keeping that overhead at the very minimum so they're not renting space or kind of caring for it. So I think we can partner with it. But I think that it is a matter that, you know, we, we have, in fact, we started to, to talk about opening up unlicensed childcare to expand the numbers and to try to maximize the use of our facility that in the past has never even been a conversation. They welcomed it. Like, if we could offer more, they know they have a waiting list of dozens.
Anybody else? Okay, so I think we just have our wrap-up exercise. Is that correct? So items for the next agenda. We know we're going to have to finalize the guidelines around the flagpole. We are going to have a presentation on the continuous improvement plan for next year. If Rob was ready to come back on the grading, he could do that.
And I think, oh, Nick left. I think you might have a Black Lives Matter petition coming from the high school. I'm pretty sure. I have a letter. It doesn't say when they're coming. It just says they wanted to talk to Rob, but I would think it would be the next year. They're meeting with Rob on Wednesday, I think, tomorrow.
And hopefully we'll have news for that time. We'll see. Okay, and I think I've heard from most of you about your interest for task teams. But we should, I should appoint tasking members to add that meeting. Okay.
Can I just ask, this is our fifth different setup?
This was pretty good.
I like this one.
This, this one worked for me.
What about you people over there with the screen? Is it that big of a deal?
I don't know. How well do you like looking in the back of my head?
Didn't bother me.
The one point I will say is that there is a hum, a high pitched whine. And I'm not really sure if it's the these with this or, or what it is. It really depends.
It was usually Martha, but it happened for Diane speaking as well and it's a-
Right, but into these microphones.
Right, into those microphones. I don't think it's these. I think it's-
Those are RTNs.
This is RTNs.
This is ours.
So, but it's definitely a feedback sort of thing. And I will say that after watching you guys last meeting from two different angles, because I did repeat to see our Westford students do an excellent presentation. And I'm glad I watched it, you know, versus just experiencing it through the Skype. I really lost something in the Skype. So when we have our E10, I hate to say it, but the mics are really important. I had, and then I get, oh yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's, for those people who are viewing outside, I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to watch ourselves. You know, it's, and I know that there are many people who are watching us. Let's do them the proper service and so they can hear us. You know, just, just, you know, to be cognizant of-
I do know when you watch it though, because these do pick up that. I mean, I always hear very well.
They do. The E10 does a, does a great job at having this. It's, but having the audience actually have the mics to be able to speak, you could then hear. Our E10's mic is pretty good. But it's, it's really interesting when you watch the people parade in the back. So, you know, depending on what's being presented, we might want to dissuade people from parading behind while we're, it's distracting.
I thought as, as a person who's had a hard time with many of the setups, this was pretty good. Andre was a little out of sight. And I assume if Brendan had been on the corner, that would have, you know, been a slight issue. But, okay. Messages to the community. Somebody help me. My brain is dead.
Thanks for coming.
Come again.
Yeah, so the discussion of the guidelines for the use of the flagpole. You're going to make me do this, aren't you?
The grading changes.
Presentation on grading changes. The policies and-
The financial report.
I think that financial report, you know, a third quarter financial report is an important piece. Okay?
I have start and stop time. I know we've got a lot now, but it was a big meeting.
Yeah, Ben will, will push out some, some stuff in social media.
Start and stop times.
Yeah, it'll be out tomorrow.
And then busing will be coming, right?
Oh, I hope so. If there's a Christmas, there'll be busing.
Okay, any last comments or questions? Okay, we are turned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, E10.